Great, thank you. Welcome everyone. It's Monday, June 13th, 2022. Time for our work session. So we'll call a meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Heller.
President.
Councilmember Jacobs. Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. We're going to get a briefing on the Urban Land Institute Advisory Service Panel area plan. So Jenna, whenever you're ready, or whoever's ready, we're all yours.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we have Emily Voges with us from Stack Rock, who has done the work to date that's in your packet on the master plan. And I'm sure that she'll be joining me here. She's been employed, or Stack Rock has been employed, by Galena Equity Partners, who is interested in a public-private partnership for a master plan in the area running generally from 40th Street to 48th Street north of Osage. The plan that Stack Rock has worked on does have a better, a number of better maps that identify where that, generally speaking, area is a little off. And the request in particulars, Galena Equity Partners have already employed Stack Rock to work on a master plan. But they have contacted the city to ask if there would be interest on part of the city to make this more of a formalized city document where the city has interaction with and is a true partner in this document. They've also engaged Urban Land Institute, ULI. For those of you who may not be familiar with who ULI is, it's an international company that is advisory often for those in the redevelopment community. It's real estate experts, architects, et cetera, and they provide advice to those that may be interested, as well as putting on programs that help advance the professions. And the ULI panel, the Advisory Service Panel is what would be asked for as to inform this plan. It would be a week-long process in July 24th of this year, where experts would come from out of state, I believe, and Stack Rock can help me with this, that some of the experts include the former mayor of Pittsburgh, somebody from San Diego that helps with their redevelopment process, et cetera, et cetera. And they would interview typically on the order of about 100 different stakeholders to help inform the plan that Stack Rock is doing. The particular financial ask from Galena Equity Partners is the interaction, not the plan itself, but the interaction with Urban Land Institute. The contract is for $135,000, and they have indicated that they'd be able and willing to commit $75,000 to $115,000 on the effort. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Voges, who has been doing the heavy lifting thus far on the master plan.
Thank you, Jenna. Hello, Mayor and council.
Thank you. You would give us your name for the record?
Yes, yes. My name is Emily Voges, and I work with Stack Rock Group. So we've been contracted by Galena to help spearhead this effort and creating a master plan. And it's still in development. It's still fluid. And again, with the Urban Land Institute, we feel like it would be very beneficial to have that input from a national, international level to compare similar cities and situations that would, instead of kind of just working in the smaller bubble, and be able to get that input from other entities throughout the country. And some of the desired outcomes that we would like, we've already, you have about a 78-page document so far, but we're still inputting and infilling different information that pertains to this area of the city. Right now, we're just studying the areas between approximately 40th and 48th, between Chindon or Osage, actually, and the river. And we've been in contact with ACHD Fire Department and some other stakeholders just to get input and ideas of how they would like to see things in this master plan as well. And so some of the, or the guiding mission that we would like to just create, an area that's, you know, that people will love, that's nestled along the river, an area that will be really important for public transportation, bike use, and reinforcing what's already there, strengthening it so it can be a hub for the surrounding cities and areas, but also be a an attraction for people to come in the area and be able to use the amenities in the space. Some of the other desired outcomes would be establish brand identity for this river district, create pedestrian bike-friendly neighborhood, create a desirable place to live while achieving economic development, strengthen the pedestrian and bicycle networks, as well as the bus and the, we've been talking with Valley Transit as well. Create standards that can be applied to all of Garden City. So we're looking at the smaller area, but something that could be incorporated for the city as a whole as well, if it's positive for the city. Ongoing support of enhanced public infrastructure, more healthy outdoor space options for local and regional residents, highlight river activities, and the green belt as an amenity, create opportunities for nonprofit organizations, water access, sports, recreation, cafes, bike rentals, bodegas, events, and public works, and establish health and wellness connections for residences and businesses. That was one comment in our previous ULI effort when we were in San Diego, that health was something that would be interesting for this area. We do have a few with primary health and some other health entities in the area, but that we can help support and grow that network.
Mayor and members of the council, I might jump back in. It was in your memorandum, but I just wanted to make sure to note that the anticipated benefits for the city to participate in this would be that the city then could adopt a plan informed by national, international experts in a format where there would be a reduced financial obligation to the city instead of the city having to initiate and pay the entire amount. And that plan would then be adopted into the comprehensive plan and inform any zoning code amendments to help implement that. And of course, the Galena Equity Partners would benefit similarly from having a plan that's informed by the process of really engaging stakeholders and having those experts inform the plan, as well as having a cohesive development for an area that they're investing in. With that, I stand for any questions or?
Questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not sure, Mr. Thunberg, if this question's for you or for Mr. Wadams, but what are the specific obligations we'd have as a consequence of the partnership?
Mayor, Councilmember Heller, that has not been identified as of yet. We do have the draft contract between Galena Equity Partners and and ULI, but we do not have a contract drafted at this point between the public-private side of things.
Thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Thunberg, please, well, thank you for your information. I'm sorry, not well. I am just curious, the gap, as I understand it, that the city would be responsible for would be between 20,000 and 60,000. That sounds like quite a range. Are we able to narrowly define that, or why the range? Yeah, the delta between 15.
Mayor, Councilmember Page, I think that that was just, just an initial discussion point that was provided by Galena Equity Partners. And certainly, as it, should the city desire to engage, that would certainly need to be identified specifically in any sort of contract.
Just be what level of buy-in if the city decided to participate. So I think that's in the city's purview.
Mr. Mayor, a question. Is this something you do with other cities in the Treasure Valley or Garden City specific? Or have you done this with anybody else?
This would be specifically just for Garden City, but they have been initiating other ULI efforts. They just recently did one with the city of Boise. And Rek and I are, if we're doing, specifically looking at housing and, but it was kind of addressing the whole Treasure Valley as a larger effort. This would be just specifically for Garden City and this ULI effort.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other questions? Well, there'll be more to come on this, council. I think, as the memo said, Mr. Two-X has, his group has a, some land holdings in that part of town. And I think creating an expectation on what he might expect and the city doing the same, you know?
Makes sense.
We'll see, we'll see what you think about it, but we wanted to get it introduced tonight. And thanks so much for coming. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There'll be more to come. Hey, it's six o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the regularly scheduled Garden City Council meeting to order for Monday, June 13th, 2022. Ask the clerk to certify the meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Clerk Callow.
Councilmember Heller.
President.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. If you'd stand and join me for pleasure. Next item is changes to the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second, had a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Let's see, what have I got? Clerk Callow, please.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Thank you. Move down to item F, Special Business. I'm a little heartbroken, but I'm going to do this anyway. Recognition of Maureen Christian for her service on the Design Review Committee for just a little over five years. I'm going to have you come up in just a moment, but I just, for the audience, we've really been very fortunate to have Maureen on our Design Review Committee for, again, a little over five years. She's got a master of city planning degree from Georgia Institute of Technology, BS in Planning from Appalachian State University. I'm not sure how we got her out here. She's got extensive experience in management, policy development, facility planning, stakeholder facilitation, project delivery. I could go on for quite a while. So the caliber of volunteers we have, and Maureen's a wonderful example of that, really have advanced the city, and her work is evident throughout town. Design review is a critical function, and she has worked well with the other two members. They're architects, so she brings a different perspective and keeps them somewhat grounded, has. And the fruit of her labor, again, is evident around the city. So I do have just a little token of our appreciation, Maureen. Next item on the agenda is an extension request for BLDFY 2021-0018. This is Proletariat Winery. Is there someone from Proletariat here? Yes, sir, if you would come up and you would give us your name and address for the record, and then let the council know why you need the extension.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Chad Slisters, Slisteryuven Architecture. I guess, address 415 South 13th Street, Boise. Still here for the same reason. We thought we were going to get through it last time. But we've worked with the city, got a few things that we are making some design adjustments on as far as some engineering, things like that, that we think we can save some dollars on. And we're planning on having that wrapped up on Friday, back to the contractor for them to reprice some stuff. And if the pricing gets adjusted and finalized, they're ready to do their SBA loan sign-off and all that. So we're kind of in the final throes of it. So hopefully you will not see me here again for at least this.
Well, we hope, as we look at our code going through the summer here, that we can get ourselves unbound from these 60-day-at-a-time extensions.
Well, and hopefully the industry adjusts a little bit so things aren't so volatile.
Well, we'll see. Anyway, are there questions, council? Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you.
It's a pleasure, the council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the extension request. Excuse me. Thank you. That we read, that we approved the 60-day extension request for Paulet Wine located at 106 East 36th Street.
I'll second that.
That works. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, clerk Callow.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes. Thank you. Next item, item F3, DSFR, DSRFY 2021-0013. This is a one-year extension request for a mixed-use structure located at 108 East 33rd Street. Is there someone here to address this topic? On?
Yes.
Remotely, yes. Welcome. It's a pleasure to have you. If you would, give us your name and address for the record and let the council know why you need the extension.
Certainly. Georgina Baranian with Sam Clovis, Georgina Baranian Associates, address is 801.
I'm going to interrupt you just a minute. You need to work on the volume so we can hear you a little better. Is that on our end?
Apologies.
Pardon me? Okay, if you would, start again. Thank you.
Sure. Georgina Baranian with Sam Clovis, Georgina Baranian and Associates, address is 801 South Olive Street, Los Angeles, California. So basically, we have an ongoing building permit and review at the moment, and we're simply asking for an extension to the designer use so we can close out some of those outstanding items. And I'm happy to elaborate on the specific items if needed.
Okay, I'm having a hard time understanding. Maybe let's look in the, let's pull this up in our packets and see if there are questions we can ask. I'm sorry, we're just having a hard time understanding the audio. Give us just a minute. Jenna, you may need to help out a little bit here.
Mayor, members of the council.
Yeah.
I know you're all scrolling quickly to page 152. I might just note for the record that the items that Ms. Barana had indicated in the extension request is that there's an active building permit and review that they're currently actively pursuing, as well as an active application with Ada County Highway District. And they're experiencing some of the standard constraints that we're seeing throughout the valley for redevelopment as timing is concerned. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
From the staff packet, I see the staff analysis, or excuse me, from the packet, I see the staff analysis and the required findings, one, two, and three, seem to be met. And therefore, I would move that we grant DS RYF 2021-0013, one-year extension.
Second, had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? There are none, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Thank you. You have your extension.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, for those in the audience, we need to move into a short executive session, after which we'll come back out and reconvene. So wanted to just go over to the other side. So if you all will sit still, we'll move this time, okay? So I need a motion to go into executive session. I have an extension request for CUPFY 2017-10. I think in your packet, we have the materials associated with this item. This is, this extension request would, if granted, with findings that we may discuss if the council chooses to actually hear the extension request, and we will enter into the record. This is for the ACHD Maintenance Yard. So council, the matter before you is, number one, if you choose to reconsider the denial of the extension as indicated in the agenda item, I would need a motion to reconsider. If the motion is made and seconded and acted on favorably, then we would move to H2.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we reconsider the denial of extension request, CUPFY 2017-10.
Second, had a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? There are none, clerk Callow.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes. Thank you. Item H2. This is the item in which we will hear or discuss or deliberate on the request for the extension. Director Wong and his maintenance supervisor deputy, manager, I'm sorry, are available if we have any questions. In fact, I thank probably for the record, Mr. Wong, if you could join us at the podium for just a moment. Welcome.
Thank you.
Bruce Wong, Director of the Ada County Highway District, the 106th, what's your address down there? I'm helping.
Adam is Garden City.
Okay, all right. I sent a letter to Commission President Mary May. And in that letter, it describes several conditions that I am going to ask the council to consider in a few minutes. And if you have a copy of the letter, if you don't, we'll hand you one, but there were, okay. These are listed under number two on the letter. I just wanted to confirm that you understand what I'm going to ask the council to do in a minute.
Mr. Mayor, I do think.
Okay. Okay. Council, if you are, there are several things that we need to consider. Miss Director, if you would, just hang tight there in case something comes up. I'm not, I need a little help answering, but in the packet, there are the findings in fact. And there are five items that we need to make a decision on in those findings to create the record to grant this request if you so choose to do so. And the items that would accrue to this application, if you choose to grant the extension, is one, that ACHD would agree to remove the salt shed in accordance with the timeline. Now, that's the wrong one. That ACHD would agree to make their best effort to remove the salt shed in accordance with the timeline prepared by Jennifer Berenger. Two, that ACHD, as it relates to the salt shed, would demonstrate compliance with the EQ requirements concerning the 100-year floodplain and seek an annual floodplain permit through the city. Three, the ACHD would essentially work with the city to install a sidewalk along the Adam Street frontage of the operations facility on or before November 30th of 2022. ACHD would plant class two or three trees along Adam, the Adam Street frontage of the operations facility in compliance with the Treasure Valley Tree Selection Guide on or before November 30, 2022. And that ACHD would agree to remove all fencing around the operations facility when that facility is moved in accordance with the schedule prepared by Jennifer Berenger attached. And council, if you approve the extension request with the items I just outlined, then Commission President May, as indicated through a letter that you have now. Commission President May has indicated through a letter that you have now that they would agree and that would, we would cease any further legal action, apart from whatever is necessary to make the litigation go away. So. Director, did I properly characterize that?
Mr. Mayor, yes, you did.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So counsel, Council President Page, if you would initiate just a discussion on whether the council wants to reconsider. We had a motion to reconsider. Now it's the reconsidering part. So if you have any comments or con, or just to start the conversation.
Yeah, I will, I will begin. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, Director Wong, thank you for your time. This has been a subject that we've, we've looked at for some time. I remember being present in 2017 as a planning and zoning commissioner at the beginning of this. It has been the desire of our city to to have the salt shed removed. And we have operated in good faith with the Ada County Highway Department to advance that. The friction and the tension has, has come from the timeline. I think in good faith, Ada County has said that they are looking for another spot, and I believe that to be true. I think from the perspective of council, the, the project relocating the salt shed, we would like to see that go faster. And for many reasons, that has not been able to happen. As I see this, and just letting this looking at the findings of fact, conclusions of law and decision document that's in the packet to guide our discussion going forward. Council members, we do need to make a finding on five different areas. The first one would be whether good cause exists for, for this request. And from my perspective, and Director Wong, we've protested in the past, but if I may, I, it's my belief or understanding that, that the efficient operation of the ACHD Maintenance Yard is a benefit to each citizen in Ada County. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So just starting there from, as a genesis, I think that that demonstrates that cause exists, good cause in fact, to grant this extension. And I listened to any comments in the supporter or.
Yeah, we'll take these, we'll take these one at a time. Is there any, is there a differing opinion?
No.
Okay, Charlie, do you want individual or?
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, all right. Okay, let's go to number two. I think the explanation's in your packet. Basically, the, the application and our applicable city regulations have not changed. The change has been that the staff can't approve these extensions by ordinance that has come to the council, so it's, it's here.
Yeah, there it is.
And the update on the flood-related issues are covered in the conditions here. They'll comply with the EQ permits, which, which they need to do anyway.
Yes, incorporated by references, I see that.
Yes. Is there any differing opinion on that one?
Mr. Mayor, did I have a question? What's the length of the extension?
The length of the extension is undetermined because it's based on the Highway District timeline that Jennifer Behringer presented with the caveat that it relies on decisions that others outside of ACHD's control are going to have to make with approvals and, I'm assuming, and wherever they move. So they've indicated they're going to make their best effort to comply with that timeline. And if the council approves this, we're going to take them at their word and that they'll have their best effort.
So it's not something we'll have to prove every year?
No, no.
That's more my question.
No, no.
That's based on their timeline that they've thought.
Yes, they're going to do their best. They've made a decision to move the yard. And this is their best guess of how that's going to work.
Okay.
That's a characterization.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Number three, are you good with that, Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Okay. Number three, there has not been a change in the neighborhood plans or policies that affect the compatibility of the project. The project's been there for a long time. The yard's been there since 1975 or something, that range. And the salt shed's been there since 27, no, 20 2017 is when the extension request, so was before that. So basically, it's, nothing's really changed.
Well, 2017, Mr. Mayor, just to put a fine point on, I believe, was the CUP application.
Okay, thank you. Always good to have a P and Z member that sends to the council. Based on that, does anyone on the council see an incompatibility?
So.
Okay, all right. Let's move down to number four. The property appears to be compliant with codes and laws. The, there are some fine points in which it's not in compliance, but we're looking at a gap measure to get us from the condition now to allow the district time to get the operation facilities moved. And requiring certain improvements that would likely have to be redone when the permanent occupant occupies that property is not a good use of public money.
And that compliant test, you mean that the floodplain is where?
Well, yeah.
One of them.
Yeah, the, the, yes. We're covered on a floodplain issue from, from other regulatory.
Powers that are above both of us.
Okay, perfect.
Number five, is it in the city's best interest to grant the extension? I would refer the council back to Council President Page's explanation for item one.
Sure, so putting briefly the words in the director's mouth that the entire county benefits by the efficient operation of this, of this structure at the Maintenance Yard. It is not ideal, and they are working, the Behringer timeline demonstrates that they are working to find a long-term home for that. What's good for the county is good for the city in this regard. And also good for the taxpayer to end this ongoing legal battle that's been expensive. So it's multifaceted, but I believe it is good for the city. I would entertain any objections to that.
None, no, see any objections. Mr. Wong, is there anything you need to add before I ask the council to take the motion?
Mr. Mayor, no, I don't.
All right, thank you. Hey, what's the pleasure of the council, Councilmember Page?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me a second, please, to comprise my thoughts. Compose my thoughts either. All right, Mr. Mayor. I move that we extend the approval of CUPFY 2017-10 pursuant to the findings of fact, conclusions of law and decisions that were just discussed under the following conditions. That ACHD agreed to remove the salt shed in accordance with the timeline prepared by Jennifer Behringer, which is attached.
We need to insert, we'll exhibit their best efforts to remove the salt shed.
Let me begin that again, that we will approve the extension under the following conditions. That ACHD agree to to their, their best efforts, agreed to remove the salt shed in accordance with the timeline prepared by Jennifer Behringer attached. That ACHD, as it relates to the salt shed, will demonstrate compliance with DEQ requirements concerning the 100-year floodplain and see an additional floodplain permit through the city. Condition three, that ACHD install a sidewalk along the Adam Street frontage of the operations facility on or before November 30, 2022. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to back up to condition two. I left an important word out. And thank you, Councilmember Heller. So back to this floodplain that that the permit that's being sought needs to be the annual floodplain permit. So that's, that's an annual requirement. And thank you for catching that, Councilmember Heller. So we have conditions one, two, and three. Condition four, that ACHD plant class two or three trees along the Adam Street frontage of the operations facility in compliance with the Treasure Valley Tree Selection Guide on or before November 30, 2022. And condition five, that the ACHD agreed to remove all fencing around the operations facility when that facility is moved in accordance with the schedule prepared by Jennifer Behringer.
Thank you. Got a motion. Do we have a second? Second, got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Very none, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. A findings document will be prepared. Does that come back to us in our next meeting, or is this it?
Mr. Mayor, what I've heard the council president say is that pursuant to the findings of fact, conclusions of law and decisions. So if the council, if that was part of the motion, then I think it's done tonight.
It was.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Paul, Mr. Mayor, the council motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item, item H3. This matter was a public hearing for CPA FY 2022-0005. This has been held open from 5/23/22. Had a request to continue this item again. So it coincides with our design review process updates. We don't want to end up with a conflict in our code. That was the request. And so staff is requesting that this item be continued again to a date certain of July 25, 2022.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we continue to adate certain ordinance 1024-22. That's CPA FY 2022-0005. And can I get that date again?
July 25?
25 July 2022.
Right.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Very none, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, item H4. This is a public hearing, S U V F Y 2020-01, Mountain View Town Homes. This is an amendment to the combined preliminary final class. This item's in our packet, starting on page 321. Mr. Hale, you want to? Join, yeah, making me grimace watching you walk.
It's all right.
Welcome, sir. It's a pleasure to have you. If you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Mayor Evans, David Hale, 116 South 23rd Street, Boise, Idaho, 83702. Last time I was in front of you with regards to the Mountain View Town Homes was to request an extension in November of 2021. Reason for this extension is because it's been challenging receiving approval from neighboring property owner. The owner of the Fred Meyer property to achieve two conditions of approval, which was to, to get pedestrian connectivity, pedestrian access into the Fred Meyer from our project as well as emergency vehicle access. And the reasons for this is that in April of 2021, the Fred Meyer property was put on the market. And new ownership took possession of the property in 2021, where there had been communication and a positive response for acceptance of our easements previously with the MetLife owners. Turns out that the new property owners who are developers out of Florida have no interest in any connectivity with our project. So they flat out told us no. And because of the interaction with Settlers Canal above our project and the Fred Meyer, we lost our pedestrian connectivity, which was an important part of our project. And so we had to go back to the drawing board to not only incorporate emergency vehicle access into our project, forcing us to lose three more lots. But we didn't have any pedestrian connectivity. The two property owners that we were trying to approach for connectivity basically said no. I will say that in 2019, what was once a dirt public street, West 53rd, coming south of Chinon, was improved with curb gutter sidewalk, asphalt landscaping to create, you know, a more public street that is more pedestrian friendly. And with one of the conditions of approval for our project from ACHD, which was to extend that into a cul-de-sac at the end of West 53rd with curb gutter sidewalk and cul-de-sac, we have successfully achieved that. That work is done. So I would say that we have created some pedestrian connectivity in the sense that our project will now link to a finished public street with curb gutter sidewalk and landscaping. I've been before planning and zoning and design review. And we have agreed to allow for a future pedestrian path from our project up to the Settlers Canal if and when Settlers Canal eventually agrees to allow public access onto their maintenance roads. This year, the city of Boise successfully achieved Boise's first linear park. In front of Capital High School, Settlers Canal agreed to allow for their maintenance road 2,000, 2,000 lineal feet of their maintenance road to be utilized for this lineal park. And so what we're seeing now is the change that I eventually will see happen in the future. When I approached Settlers Canal to try and get the same sort of access, they flat out said no. And it's my opinion that the reasons behind that is because the property in front of Capital is visible. It's easily accessible, and they don't deal with the same sort of issues that we've dealt with above our property and the rest of the maintenance road up to the bench. And that is that it's inaccessible, it's not visible. And so what happens is, is vehicles will drive down the maintenance road, and they'll dump trash. And there will be illegal activity, and it creates a problem for Settlers Canal. We're all for this. We're all for this pedestrian connectivity and for the maintenance canals to be used as an amenity. We installed a perimeter cyclone fence. To mitigate the issues that we were having with illegal dumping and car traffic on our property. That did not eliminate the foot traffic that continues to use the canals that the canal company doesn't seem to have an issue with. And so I personally feel like the future of these maintenance roads, if the public is willing to accept that this is something that we need to look at as a as a benefit, as an amenity. Not utilize them for reasons that they are closed off, that they would will eventually become the amenity that that we want them to. And so we've agreed for this connectivity to take place in the future on our project. Not only extending West Fifty Third into our project, but for our project to connect up to the maintenance roads and. You know, I'm happy to say that we've we've gotten to this point of mitigating these issues that we've had along the way. It's been a long time coming, but I certainly hope that the powers that be at settlers and whoever else may have a voice can eventually get them to allow this connectivity because. There is a definite disconnect from the top of Glenwood down below. To Garden City because of the fact that the east side of Glen Glenwood going up the hill does not have sidewalks. And so with that, I just I appreciate your vote of approval tonight for this modification. So that we can get going and develop this project that we've been working on for a couple of years. And I'll stand for any questions.
Questions. Don't see any now. When I open the public hearing, whatever comment we have, you'll have the last word to come up if we need to correct something or have another.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, that was Thornborough.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Mr. Hale did a great job at going through. The details pertaining to the requested change. I'll try to point out any anything that I I think might be noteworthy. Certainly, as he's gone, as this has gone through the process, the the majority of the discussion has been related to the connectivity. There are a few other minor changes that were requested relating to the retaining wall and making that more efficient. As well as there was a water feature that is proposed now to be of a. Altered to be a plaza space. And and this is just a. A visual that was utilized during, I believe, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. That shows the location of the project and the location of the high school, the location of Fred Meyer. And then the the light on Chindin that allows for access back to the green belt system and then into the community. And also noting the pedestrian pathways that individuals are utilizing on the applicant's property currently. And this is an image of the the improved sidewalk that Mr. Hale referred to down Fifty Third Street. And now there there is improved sidewalk to to the project. And however, it dumps out onto Chindin. And this is an image where the the sidewalk that is here. Does, excuse me, connect into a sidewalk in front of the Nelson RV facility. And then it has to come out and go around the canal system before there's another goat trail into Fred Meyer for those that would be utilizing the Fred Meyer. So there'd be just that short little gap for those utilizing the Fred Meyer. This was not in the PowerPoint presentation, but it is on page twenty one of the staff report. For those that aren't going to Fred Meyer, but might happen to be utilizing the Kent stoplight. To get into the network of connectivity. They would have to trans transverse a little bit further to get to that stoplight. So I I know that Mr. Hale has been working on this, I believe, for at least a year trying to find connections. Either up to the settlers canal to Glenwood or across here and. To no avail, unfortunately for the project. And this is just lastly a route. And as he mentioned, both the design review and committee, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. Did recommend approval of the changes, understanding. And that the project was just not able to get that pedestrian connectivity. As noted, they've agreed to an additional condition that was proposed by the design review committee. For a future pathway that would go up to the settlers canal, should settlers canal ever allow for. Not to be a public pathway. Mr. Hale is also correct that it it sounds as though. In the Treasure Valley, perhaps the discussion related to utilizing the canals as multi-use pathway is changing at some level. I know that, as noted, Boise has had some level of success in in interacting with canal companies, as have. The city of Meridian and Eagle, but those would not be settler scout canal specific. Understandably, Mr. Hale's asked to not construct that pathway until it could be utilized. Within the. Within the subdivision. And so staff does want to note, should you move forward with the design reviews recommendation for that future connectivity? That there is not a condition of approval noting that the CCNRs or some other mechanism notes that at such time. That the canal be installed, that that pathway would also be installed. There is a condition requiring the easement. Which could have some sort of language noting that at such time that the canal pathway is utilizable, that that easement would be effective. But there is not conditioned. The mechanism that we have discussed, Mr. Hale and I about what the mechanism would be to then construct it. In ten fifteen, five years, whoever knows how long that might be, if ever a possibility. And with that. One other thing to note. Garden City's transportation needs plan that's most recently adopted in two thousand and twenty one. Does reference utilizing settlers canal as a potential future multi-use pathway. And the city of Boise has recently adopted a master pathways plan. And it notes some of the things that we're discussing. So this canal specifically as a side path opportunity. And then the connection for that school down into to get to. The green belt and whatnot as a critical pathway connection need. With that, I do stand for questions.
Questions of staff.
Mr. Stone, just a quick way, is it a difficult thing to add that to the CCNRs? Is that something that we should put in there just to?
Mayor, councilmember Jacobs, that would just be an additional condition of approval, should you find it necessary.
And then the other question, I wasn't here during the initial approval. So just a question. So all of access in and out of this development is on Fifty Third. And then what is? If you could just, I think we talked about a little before, what's required from ITD? Because if you take a left hand turn, you're right at that light. Are they requiring right only? Or is it it's it's? It's just by driver beware.
And Mayor, councilmember Jacobs, ITD has reviewed this and they did not require right in a right out of Fifty Third Street.
Hey, other questions of staff? Great, thank you. This time I open the public hearing for. SUV FY twenty twenty dash one. There's no one in. Are you going to testify, sir? Yeah. Okay, all right. There's no one here with us physically that has signed up to testify. Do we have anyone on? Has joined us via Zoom that wants to testify? If so, use your raise your hand option on the Zoom and the clerk will recognize you. Nothing. Okay. No takers. So, Mr. Hale, if you want to come back and. Wrap it up from your perspective.
Mayor Adams, members of council, some points of clarification and one being that. Once we start construction, the existing goat trail that the the students from Capitol use will most likely not be accessible to them anymore. There is another goat trail that happens to be a little bit further north. On Glenwood, doesn't require them to actually step into the right of way. And it starts before the guard rail ends at the top. And so I foresee that these the kids will still try and, you know, work their way through the site. But fortunately, we've got signage that we've created to help direct them to the new goat trail so that they can effectively get down safely to the Fred Meyer. And I see that being used in the future when it might be difficult for them to traverse through the project once it's completed. The the future path. Language and how to how to make this enforceable has been discussed with my partner and our attorney. As well as with Jenna. And we've come to the conclusion that the best way to approach this is to address this on the plat via a plat note about the future. Path to be. To be constructed at a future time when settlers would be allowing public accessibility onto their maintenance roads. This will also be addressed in our CCNRs, referencing the decision document. Throughout, you know, either tonight, designer view, P and Z, council's decision, as well as noting the plat in the CCNRs. About the future construction of this path, if and when settlers does in fact. Allow accessibility. And Jenna did mention the water feature. We had agreed to install a water feature at the entry of the project. Because of erosion considerations, our civil engineer was not. He wasn't thrilled with the fact that the canal was so close to our infrastructure. And so we ended up tiling piping three hundred feet of the Thurman Mill Canal. So that we could have a safer, more or less less liable situation in the future for the HOA. And therefore, this water feature was replaced by an entry plaza that also connects to the west end of the project where there is another plaza. And so that was with regards to the water feature, asking for that to be removed. Stand for questions.
Any other questions? Great, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
With that, I'll close the public hearing on SUV FY twenty twenty dash zero one. Turn it to the. Council for deliberation. Council, you can. Approve the amendments with the findings that design review and planning and zoning have generated. You can. Amend their decision and. Add or subtract conditions, or you can deny. So with that. I'll open it up for deliberation among the council members. If anyone has a position that you'd like to express. Been a challenging piece of property there for as long as I've been around and. I don't get to vote, but. Put a lot of effort into that and. Everybody find the decision. Page numbers. iPad went on me. Maybe I can help a little bit. Are there any findings from the planning and zoning or design review that you disagree with? Anybody on the council?
So Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion on. So FY twenty twenty oh one, the Mountain View Town Homes to approve the amendment for the modification. As presented with the. Recommendations to the planning, zoning and design review committees.
Hey. Have a second.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second. To approve. Essentially. The intent of the motion maker to adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law that were contained in the packet from. Planning, zoning, design review. That clarification, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. Call the call roll, please.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Hope you get feeling better. Next time I'll see you running around and.
What'd you do, David? Oh, my word. Bless your heart. Good luck with the project.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, next item H five. This is a resolution approving amendments to the Garden City Employee Handbook is previously adopted and provided effective date. This is on page three eighty one in your packet. Are there any questions on that?
No.
Okay, if there's no questions, it's a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. Mayor, do we approve resolution eleven twenty four dash twenty two, approving amendments to the Garden City Employee Handbook as previously adopted?
Second. Got a motion and a second, discussion on the motion. Hearing that a court call roll.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Thank you. Item H six, resolution. Eleven twenty five twenty two dash twenty two, proving the streetlight dedication agreement template. Any questions? Yes.
I just can say that I have a very short memorandum on page three eighty three of your packet, proposed resolutions on three eighty four, your packet. And for this dedication agreement that's on page three eighty five of your packet. It's pretty straightforward. It's our proposed dedication agreement.
Thank you. Any questions with Mr. Wadams? Hearing now, it's a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution eleven twenty five dash twenty two. Regarding the streetlight dedication agreement template.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none with a court call roll.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs. Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Thank you. Item H seven, we have heard from the core. We are not hearing that tonight. There's a. Been a. Nothing major, but just a delay in them doing some things on their end. So we're going to take a run at this again in two weeks, Jenna. Nothing major, but just a delay in them doing some things on their end. So we're going to take a run at this again in two weeks, yeah? Or four weeks.
How about two years?
Yeah. We've been working on this, you know, since I was a child. So so we're.
Since your last birthday.
Yeah, actually, you know, up since my last several birthdays, back when I was your age, council member. Now, so. Okay, that concludes the business on our agenda tonight. I've entertained a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Good job, everybody.